Thank you, Mr. Brookhouse. The Chair will entertain a motion now to add a supplemental agenda item nine D. So it's been moved to second. This is the approval of a resolution to hire a special counsel for sales tax litigation. All in favor of putting it on the agenda? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Passed unanimously. We now go to approval of the minutes. Any questions or discussion about the minutes? Chair will entertain a motion. Mr. Delafonts, executed by Ms. Ballard. Any discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. We have no presentations. Who can present a report? Mr. Brookhouse.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Board members, you've received your September 30th school population report. You've also received your Head Start report for September with our enrollment at 451 and our waiting list at 136 applicants. Parent meetings and open house were held at all sites. Policy council representatives were elected. Emergency drills were conducted at each site as well. The first policy council meeting was held on September 18th. Policy council officers were elected and the following items were approved. The June 19th policy council minutes and the financial and attendance reports for August 2017. Home visits and parent orientations were conducted at all Head Start sites. I would like to report our current sales tax numbers for our general fund, which shows September 2017 collections at $3,422,045 or 29.2% above budget for the third month of this year. Collections are $3,522,360 or 30.3% above collections for the same month last year. Collections for this year so far after three months are $10,382,127 or 27.4% over budget and $10,269,275 or 27% over the same time period last year. The Yale Office of Undergraduate Admissions has honored Borup High School English AP gifted English teacher Lori Benoit as a recipient of the 2017 Yale Educator Award. The award honors outstanding educators who serve as an inspiration to their students, supporting and encouraging them to perform at high levels and to achieve excellence. She was nominated by her former student, Simran Preet Chada, now a Yale student. Ms. Benoit received engraved death sentence, a plaque, and has been invited to attend an awards ceremony at Yale. And I'm very happy to have Ms. Benoit with us here tonight. I'm going to ask her to stand and I think she has a few comments for you if you will allow it. Lori?
Thank you so much for recognizing me and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I really appreciate it. At first I wasn't sure exactly what to say, then I read and then what to say. First of all, I want to thank you. Thank you for making my dream possible. I get to be on the front line every day in the classroom and that would not be possible without the decisions that go on in this room. So thank you very much for everything that you do for us. We don't take it for granted. We know that you face very difficult decisions with finances, personnel, and we, we, as teachers in the classroom, we have faces to put to your decisions. We have children developing, growing in futures. So we thank you so much. We know that sometimes you may not realize the effects of the decisions that you're making, but we live them and we thank you so much for it. The second thing I'd like to do, which when he asked me this, I thought immediately I want to do this. My family's here tomorrow, my sons and my husband. And like all of you have families, many of you probably at home right now, somebody probably has some food waiting on you in the microwave, did you know? We all make sacrifices, everybody does, to make sure that our future is bright. And I want to just thank my family as a representation for all of our families who give to this community for our children. And lastly, I thank God that he guides and directs each and every one of us. When we opened with prayer tonight, I thought it was so fitting. And I want you to know that we, as teachers, individually and at times collectively, need to pray that God will help you and guide you in having peace about the decisions you make. Thank you so much for letting me be on the front line with students as you're behind giving directions and sending orders. And we are very grateful for all you do for us. Thank you.
If I could just make a comment, I have not met you before tonight. I'm very impressed with what you've just said and I'm really impressed, I think we're blessed because you're a shining light here in Calhoun Parish, that's obvious. But now you're going to carry your torch up to Yale and help those folks up there. And I think that's really significant that you're coming from Calhoun Parish, Lake Charles, you're going up to the bedrock of education, Yale University, and you're going to show them how to do it. And I think that's pretty cool. Congratulations to you on being able to hold this. Mr. Brookhouse?
Mr. Chair, we're also very honored tonight to have with us our Head Start Policy Council. You've been hearing about Head Start for years now and about our relationship with our Head Start students and those people who help represent our program. We have them here tonight. I'd like to introduce them to you now and thank them for their willingness to not only serve on the council, but actually be here tonight so that you can meet them. We have our Policy Council President, Brandon Marlborough, here. We have our Vice President, Jessica Wilheim. Our Secretary, Derek Augustine. Assistant Secretary, Kiara Morgan. We have several members who represent Brenda Hunter, Head Start. We have Kerry Edwards, Kayla McAlfrish, Corey Ozeke, Malaya Rosimian, Timothy Jones. We have a couple of members who represent J.D. Clifton. We have Shanitra Lewis and Keandra Guillory. Several of our members represented Quincy, Sheila Pete, and Kadita Joyce. Two more who represent Jake Drost, Chastity Harrison, and Krispy Burrows. And then we have three members who represent J.I. Watson in Iowa. We have Kimberly Taylor, Courtney Fredy, and Lena Guillory. If we can give all these folks a round of applause. And we're honored to have them here to kind of see how you guys run a meeting and exercise that tonight. The National Blue Ribbon Schools Program recognizes public and private elementary, middle, and high schools based on their overall academic excellence and their progress in closing achievement gaps among student subgroups. Every year, the U.S. Department of Education seeks out and celebrates great American schools, also schools that demonstrate that all students can achieve at high levels. More than 8,500 schools across the country over the years have been presented with this coveted award. The National Blue Ribbon School Award affirms the hard work of students, educators, families, and communities in creating safe and welcoming schools where students master challenging content. The National Blue Ribbon School flag gracing the entry or flying overhead is a widely recognized symbol of exemplary teaching and learning. I'm very pleased to announce that Vincent Settlement Elementary has been chosen as a Blue Ribbon School. The Blue Ribbon celebration will be Friday at 9:00, October 13th, that's it, Friday, at Vincent Settlement Elementary. And we're very proud of them for achieving this. We're all invited, audience, anybody's invited to that event at Vincent Settlement, October the 13th, Friday at 9:00. I'm required to read the following by the State Bond Commission. It's a public notice. Notice is hereby given in compliance with Louisiana Revise Statute 42,191 that school sales tax district number three of the parish of Calhoun, Louisiana, will meet an opening public session on the 14th day of November 2017 at 5:00 PM at the offices of the Calhoun Parish School Board, 3310 Broad Street, Lake Charles, Louisiana, to consider calling an election to be held in the district on April 28, 2018, to consider authorizing sales tax secured bonds for the purpose of acquiring and/or improving land and playgrounds, purchasing, erecting, enlarging, or improving school buildings and other school-related facilities within and for said district and acquiring the necessary equipment and furnishings therefore, titled to which shall be in the public for the purpose of operating and maintaining the district's school facilities. And so we're announcing that here tonight on October the 10th and will be published on October the 12th. That concludes it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Brookhouse. Yes, Mr. Delafonts?
Thank you. I'd be remiss if I didn't introduce the Director of Head Start, Michelle Jobin. And I hate to put you on the spot, I know I wasn't at the first meeting when we elected all these wonderful people, but would you like to even offer a few words? This is the first time I've ever seen a policy council attend one of our board meetings and what you're doing to get them here to see what we're doing and how it works means a lot. It's going to be helpful as they go on and run the meetings as we continue.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. As you all know, I started last year, September. I came on as the Director of the Early Childhood Department and our policy council was not as strong as we really felt it needed to be. We know Head Start really prides itself in making sure that all decisions that are made regarding Head Start have input from the parents. And so coming on this year, I really did my best to ensure that I attended all the orientations that were conducted at all the school sites and spoke to the parents about the importance of the policy council and the decisions that they will make for our Head Start program. And so this year, September the 18th, we had our first meeting and we were elated to have representation for most of our sites. And they have been gone whole with just coming on board, wanting to know exactly what their roles and responsibilities are and ensuring that they are meeting the expectations that have been established by Head Start. So when we attended, when we had the meeting on September the 18th, one of the things I told them was, I said, "I have the opportunity every month to come to the school board meeting and you all do a phenomenal job of following the Robert's Rules of Order, which our meetings have to be conducted by." And I told them it would be a wonderful opportunity for them to see how it's done. So we scheduled our next meeting for it to be today and so we really want you all to show us how we should be conducting our meetings because I have to tell you, our expertise doesn't necessarily fall in the area of following the Robert's Rules of Order, but it definitely, I will tell you, all of these individuals that represent the policy council truly have a love for children and really want to do what is in the best interest of our Head Start students. So thank you.
Okay. At this time, we'll move to our next agenda item, seven, which is an executive session. The Chair will entertain a motion to take away this into executive session.
Move it up into executive session.
Mr. Tarver's made a motion to second. Second by Mr. Delafonts. All in favor of breaking for executive session? Say aye. Any opposition? It is unanimous, we will take a pause.
We have three items on the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we return to open session.
It's been moved that we return to open session, second. We have a second proposal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? It is unanimous. Mr. Delafonts?
I move on behalf of the committee that we resolve item eight, consideration of workers' compensation claim number 3896927. Our attorney is Kevin Coney.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposition? It's unanimous, Mr. Delafonts.
I move on our second case for consideration of general liability claim 4369531. Our attorney is Ed McGuire.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye. Any opposition? It is unanimous.
And I don't know, do we need to, in reference to item B, that we pulled it from the executive session, just for a note?
Okay. That completes it. Agreed. All right, let's go to item eight. Committee reports will begin with eight A, Budget and Committee, September 26, 2017. Mr. Delafonts?
Okay. First off, let me thank you guys for taking over and running a meeting in my absence. I was in Houston working, so it looked like we met on Tuesday, September 26. Mr. Bourne presented the first item on the agenda, which is 2017-18 General Fund Budget Revision Number One. It included revenues and other sources of funds for $330,166,556. It's an increase of $34,730. And expenditures and other uses of funds for $334,109,858. It's an increase of $1,667,190 over the original budget. General Fund Budget Revision Number One projects, I'm sorry, projects a current deficit of $3,943,302 resulting in a projected unassigned fund balance of $49,45,358 or 14.85% of projected revenues. It was recommended that Budget Revision Number One for the 2017-18 General Fund Budget be approved as presented above, so I move on behalf of the Budget Fiscal Management Committee.
Coming out of committee, no second is needed. Any discussion of questions? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous? Mr. Delafonts?
Next item was our Director of Internal Auditing, Wayne Foster, presented an update on the school fees for 2017-18 school year. There was much discussion about the necessity of several office administrative fees and staff was asked to look at ideas on how to consolidate them. A motion was made by Mr. Hayes and seconded by Mr. Smith to accept the report.
It is moved on behalf of committee?
Yeah.
Move second?
I'm sorry. Move on behalf of the committee that we accept Mr. Foster's recommendations.
Coming out of committee, no second is needed. Any discussion of questions? Mr. Hardy?
Yes, Mr. Brookhouse, has anything been done to look at this that was brought forth by a parent about, would the parent consider excessive fees or?
Not since a committee meeting, Mr. Hardy. I mean, we will steadily look at it in anticipation of next year. I know you guys expressed some interest in us doing something next year. The fees have mostly been collected for this year.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, because I did hear from another parent too, and I would just applaud the cost of joining the girls' organization for like 1,600 bucks. So I wish we would look at it quickly.
And I don't want to create the misconception, extracurricular activities are probably not going to be on the radar initially. Those are voluntary events in most cases. So what we were basically talking about were school fees. Extracurricular, while they were listed, they're all over the place depending on which school you attend and which organization you are a member of, so.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Any other discussion or question? Mr. Delafonts?
I wasn't here and along with Mr. Hardy, I mean, I know these things are the extracurricular activities, but at what point do we price kids out of being able to participate in a sport or cheerleader or football or baseball? When you have baseball that mandates that you have to come up with $3,000 or $5,000 to play? I mean, what family, average family can come up with that? And I don't know from our standpoint, but we have to look at that and I know it's something that maybe it's not popular out there, but I just can't see pricing kids out of being able to participate in something. So I think this board should have some play in looking at formulating a policy that we have to look at, the way it impacts our kids.
And those are listed, as I said, Mr. Delafonts, so we certainly can add those to the list when we look for.
Because some wasn't listed and I know some schools just say, "We're just going to fundraise whatever you can make." So maybe we can get a better idea of what exactly these schools are charging these kids, even if it is a fundraiser. What is the cost that you require to fundraise in order to participate? Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion or questions? You're made a motion. Bill?
A lot of these things with the extracurricular activities, I understand that the cost involves all that for kids that went through myself and it does get expensive, but a lot of that stuff on extracurricular activities are things that the students want to participate in. So the cost is directly related to all of the events that are tied into that, whether they're going to be traveling to some camp or whatever the case may be. A lot of these things that they get in there, they want new uniforms. With uniforms, I've written checks for team uniforms and that gets spent. There's multiple ways to fund this, a lot of stuff, and I get that. I mean, because being a business owner, you get hammered every week about writing, you know, checks over and over and over for that kind of stuff. But just remember guys, a lot of that stuff on extracurricular activities is driven by what the students themselves want to do and some of the parents that are in that. So it's not just, "We're going to charge you $1,500 to be a cheerleader." Well, you know, every year they're wanting new uniforms, they're wanting to travel to go to this competition, that competition, and all of that that's in there, there's multiple funding ways to do that, like they're being a business owner. But just kind of remember, it's not just they're charging them to do that, it's to cover the costs in there, which is not a whole lot different than what we do for drivers in. They're not making money, they know what the cost is going to be and that's why they're coming up with that. And again, it's an extracurricular activity, but it does get a little hot, but that's something that they can address on an individual school basis. I don't think that needs to be at the board level as far as for curricular activities. As far as for school fees, a lot of that has to do with, a lot of the fees that the teams charge have to do with schools that are not tied to them. A lot of these schools that are tied to schools, they can pretty much control the money for whatever they want to do. So that's a comparison, a different comparison there.
Okay, we're still in the first round. Anybody else who has not spoken previously on this vote? Second round, Mr. Hardy?
Mr. Brookhouse, some of these fees come under the idea of free and appropriate education and those activities are educational activities and so we, it might be to look at that a little closely because what I see are these people who are like soccer moms and they like to place their daughters at the front of something and by the time they get through, they're so enthusiastic about showcasing their child, the fee is way up there and a lot of the kids can't participate. It might be something that we need to look at.
Any other discussion or questions? All in favor of the most?
I have a question.
Yes.
Initially, at the committee meeting, we were talking about the fees that were assessed for labs and the supplies that they were, the students were responsible for. Now we're going, have we changed from that since we had this little brief discussion about extracurricular activities? Are they going to be lumped together? Because Mr. Brookhouse had stated that they were definitely going to look at the fees, like Mr. Giddry said at the committee meeting, locker fees, things that are already housed in the schools and every child that comes to the school has to pay a fee to use a locker that taxpayer funds have already paid for. I thought those were the things we were talking about. I didn't think we had moved on to cheerleader. I don't know what the band has to pay. It took so long since I had someone at school that I don't know what they have other than cheerleaders and dance lines and that kind of thing, which are things that the students actually choose to participate in.
So you're asking Mr. Brookhouse?
Yeah, I'm asking Mr. Brookhouse, are we staying with the discussion from the committee meeting, which was Kleenex, hand sanitizer, all of these things that parents were being asked to be in? I remember Mr. Strapp, and he talked about something that his granddaughter couldn't participate in, but I thought we were geared primarily with those mandatory things. Are we now going to do extracurricular stuff with this or what?
I'll bring you back probably in the spring in time to, if you want to make changes for next year before we release all the list and everything.
Okay.
I'll probably bring you back a synopsis of all of it and you can pick and choose what you would like to address or not address.
Okay, because I think it was stated on this end that each school has a different fee for these extra things, where it's running $1,600 at one school, it might be running $900 at another. You know, so that's going to require a lot more research on your part, I guess, you know? And then once you start adding in extra things like competitions and that kind of stuff, it could go over. So I'll just wait until the spring when you bring the information with the breakdown on all of these things.
Okay. Mr. Tarver?
Oh, not since we're having some discussion, I figured let me put in my two cents. We're talking about, first of all, let me clarify, what we're voting on here is we're not, we're not voting to do anything. We're voting to see after Mr. Foster's report about the fees.
Correct.
But the discussion, since we're all talking, I'm just going to put my two cents in about the way the discussion went. There's really three things. There's school supplies, which is they have to bring with them, school supplies, binders, all kinds of, all kinds of Kleenex, all kinds of school supplies. Then there's registration fees that we're charging every kid to come to school. If they're going to come to school, they have to pay a registration fee, a locker fee, parking fee in some cases. That's thing number two. Then thing number three is football, basketball, Beta Club, all the different clubs. I don't think we've given these guys any good indication of what we want them to do. So I don't know how well that's going to go. Y'all were asking about what they're going to go investigate for us. My thought in the committee meeting was go investigate for us the registration fees that basically kids have to pay to come to school, because I think that's a major problem. But we're kind of all over the place here, so I don't know what they're going to go investigate really. I guess I'm kind of asking.
I agree with you. That's what I thought.
Mr. Giddry?
Mr. Brookhouse, I just have a question. On the fees, I could have sworn Mr. Foster said that we don't mandate any kid, if they don't pay, there's no penalty. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I was told, and I'm not sure, I just would like us to check on it, that there are schools out there that are imposing like not letting them do field trips and stuff because of the fees. Not? So if we could check on that, I'd appreciate that, because I could have sworn that was said, that if someone don't pay a fee, that we do not have a penalty against them.
There are some things that deal with extracurriculars, right, where the fees are penalties. But as far as coming to school, no child will not come to school because they haven't paid a school registration.
So we do have policy where like if they don't pay the $2 math fee or the $3 locker fee, we would.
Well, if that implies on school lunches, you guys even approved that the principal can exercise on an extracurricular.
I know the lunch thing and just to state, I didn't vote for that in the first place because I didn't agree with that. But I'm talking about, not the lunch thing, I understand we have policy for that, but is there a policy that if a kid doesn't pay his $3 locker fee or something like that, can they be kept from going on a field trip?
It has happened, yes.
It has happened. Okay. I think that is observed.
All right, Mr. Giddry, second. Mr. Delafonts?
So I just want to take it back on Mr. Giddry real quick. So, Mr. Brookhouse, our policy is what? Because from what I understand, I know we have it for lunch, if kids are not paying, we've given the principal authority.
Mr. Brookhouse, I would want to quote our policy without having it in front of you, especially since it's going to get contentious here, it appears. I want to read the policy to you and not have it in front of me.
Okay, but I know we've been in the past that for book fees or anything that they withheld students from doing activities. And I know we have a big issue right now with registration fees for not being able to go to homecoming dance and other things.
Yes.
So we will need some clarity on that because I could swear we had that and we have been enforcing that over the course of, as long as I've been on that, with helping kids from activities.
Years and years and years.
We've been doing that.
What we don't do is, a child doesn't not come to school because they didn't pay the registration.
Right, right, right. In line with the issue of fees, I know every school pretty much does what they want in terms of supplies. I mean, some schools require you to bring more, some schools even have where you can pay a fee in order to supply all at one time. And I would like to see us be able to get more of our schools doing the same thing. I mean, of course, we can get a better deal if we do it all at one, whether this board decides that, you know, we don't, we're going to pay for all the supplies for the kids. I know Ms. Harper, Eric's mother, has been doing a lot in terms of paying supplies. You know, later on, we come back where they need a binder or they need two binders, they need some pins. So perhaps we can come up and find a way that partner up with other parishes and get supplies, like we do some of our food supplies.
Well, I understand, a lot of the registration fees go toward making copies at schools for worksheets, hundreds and hundreds of thousands of copies that are made in the school office for things that go on in the school. The schools pay for their own copiers. We provide the paper, but they pay for their copiers. We, we provide the paper, but they pay for their copiers. Um, so it goes deeper. If, if we want to stop doing that, we're going to have to figure out how we're going to pay for their copiers. Because, uh, which I'm going to tell you is a significant amount of money.
We're leasing them, correct? All schools lease?
Yeah, all schools are on three-year lease now. Those that have expired for over the last four years or five years, they're going with a three-year lease option.
And do we pretty much regulate as two, one lease or?
No.
So they're free to lease wherever, so we don't know?
We use, every vendor has their contracts, um, so they, they...
That's something we need to, we really need to talk about.
It, it is, uh, we, it's, we've attempted to even get a formal list of all of the copiers in our district. And we've been fairly successful, um, but, but even that is a massive undertaking. Uh, lots of copiers, lots of money. So a lot of those registration fees go toward that, I'll take that.
Okay.
Okay, so in line with the board, what we're voting on is to accept the motion to ask the staff to look at ideas on how to consolidate office slash administrative fees.
No, point of order, that was not the motion. The motion was to accept Mr. Foster's report. If, if somebody wants to make a motion, they're going to have to make one.
Correct. What?
Point of recommendation is simply to accept the report.
Okay, all right.
If you want to do something else, you need to amend the committee's recommendation.
Well, if, if I may. According to the minutes from the meeting, there's, and I'll just read here. Uh, there was much discussion about the necessity of several office administrative fees and staff was asked to look at ideas on how to consolidate. So is that what we're, that's, from my understanding, that's what we're doing.
Yeah, and that's what we're going to do, yes.
Okay, so that's what we're, well, then what do we vote on? That's what we're, we're going to accept it. Well, either way, we can pull it out and then add it back in if we want, whatever the pleasure of the board. So, uh, first thing what we'll do is we'll go ahead and just accept the report, uh, from Mr. Foster as the, uh, recommendation from the committee, then we'll come back and we'll figure out on it.
Okay, any other discussion on accepting the report? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, all right, Mr. Delafont?
So I move with the second part of this was to have staff asked to look at ideas of how to consolidate, uh, the fees and, uh, for the administrative fees.
I second that one.
Okay. So...
Is that a motion?
Yeah, that came as from the committee, so we're going to say it doesn't need a second, come from the committee.
Okay.
So...
You had your hand up? Yeah, so I have no problem discussing it as a separate motion. I just want to make sure it's clear so they know what we're telling them to do. So now they have a motion that's telling them directly to do something. I, I have no problem with that. I just want to make it clear that we're now voting on a motion to instruct these guys to do something specific.
All right, Mr. Delafont?
It's normal for this board to refer things to staff without motions. That was done at the committee. If you want to do it again, that's okay, but somebody can...
We're, we're already had a motion. All right, Mr.?
I mean, we already had a motion. I mean, I, I'm confident, like, that they're going to come back with that. But if we're going to look at the fees, I think it would be helpful to the board since a lot of them are new, um, that if we could come, break it down on a school-by-school basis, let them know what the operating expenses are and what that money's going to and the dollars that it takes to, to operate those schools.
I, I think you have to see both sides of it.
Well, that's what I'm saying. It's not, they're different asking for the fees and what, and not understanding what the fees, what that's going to, trying to be total dollars broken out into that, I think that's going to be tied.
Yeah, I think if, if you were to convert it, for instance, to a per-child allotment rather than a fee collection, how does that affect each individual school's budget? Because if it's a uniform allotment, you know, every school will get the same per child. How does that affect what they're spending? Are they going to have to get rid of some stuff, add some stuff, can they add some stuff? So you need to see both sides of it.
Yeah. I think it can be done.
Mr. Brook?
Mr. John? Uh, I just want to reiterate what was already said. The school fees are not mandated that you pay. We're not going to throw the child out of school. Are there some consequences for not paying fees? Yes, there are. If you had no consequences, nobody would pay a fee, you'd get zero money. And if you got zero money, you have zero worksheets, zero tests, zero pencils. You know, we're required, the, the schools are required to send envelopes home with stamps on them. You got to buy stamps. When I was the principal, our budget was between a hundred and two hundred thousand dollars a year. We spent basically on children. Now, and we didn't collect all that fees, we had fundraisers to do that also. But like Mr. Brookhouse said, if you exempt the kids from fees, we're going to have to find money here on the board because we cannot not pass out worksheets and run copiers and test and all that. So this, this, it's not an easy solution to this, but, and if somebody's got a miracle cure, I'll, I'll write it in here. Anyway.
Thank you, Mr. John. Any other discussion at all? Any questions? All in favor, excuse me, all in favor of Mr. Delafont's motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Mr. Delafont?
Next item, Mr. John gave you a brief update on the out-of-state travel policy and procedures that CPSB has been using since October 2014. Mr. John made a motion to amend the original policy to expand the travel area to nationwide, outside of the six to seven hour driving distance once every three years, up to three times in a tenure with CPSB for an individual and no more than four members from one site at any one time. Uh, after much discussion, I was going to seven to five in favor, so on behalf of the committee, I'd still move.
All right, it's been, uh, moved by committee, no second, is to require, uh, any discussion? Mr. Roberts?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would, uh, I'd like to move to table, this recommendation.
Mr. Roberts, move to table, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Ballard, second? No discussion. All in favor of table?
Can we, can Mr. Ballard just explain what table means?
Mr. Ballard, would you explain what table means?
Table in a meet, you either have to take it up at this meeting or next meeting or it dies.
Any other questions? All in favor of table in motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
Nay. Nay.
The motion passes. Do you want to go ahead? All right, all in favor, raise your hand, please. All opposed, same time? I think it passes. All right, next item on the agenda, Mr. Delafont?
Next item presented was information purposes only on public auction of surplus items. Uh, the auction will be held at Burton Coliseum on Friday, October 7th, 2017. So that was some information on. Uh, last item on the agenda was a riverboat funds updated that included the status of each pod being constructed in a pod project, ten followed by project, projected results of financial operations of the Riverboat Fund for the fiscal year 2017 and fiscal year 2018. The report was for information purposes only. Uh, there we know of further business with the going of, and the committee, meeting was adjourned at six thirteen P M. That concludes the report.
Thank you, Mr. Delafont. Item eight?
Mr. Hayes?
Yeah.
I believe the amendments of the committee reflected Ms. Ballard made a motion that was seconded by...
On the surplus item?
Authorized and declared items as surplus. You had two pieces of information before you. One was an advise only as to the items to be declared surplus and the other was to declare them surplus. The second one declaring them surplus was the subject of a motion and a second and a vote by the board. So I think you need to have that motion come from the committee and the board move to act.
Okay, okay. All right, so we'll go back to, uh, the items of the public auction surplus. So it was recommended to declare these listed items as surplus and to authorize those items to be sold at auction, uh, which was on October sixth, seventh, 2017. Uh, so on behalf of the board, I move that on that motion.
All right, been moved, no second, required, any questions? Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition unanimously passes? All right, Mr. Delafont, thank you. We now move to item eight B, CNI Committee, September twenty-sixth, 2017. Mr. Ballard, your answer.
Thank you, Mr. President. The CNI Committee met Tuesday, December twenty-sixth, twenty seventeen. Uh, Mr. Campbell introduced the approval of the 2017-18 textbook adoption committees for high school science and career and technical education. A motion by Mr. Hardy, uh, seconded by Mr. Smith to accept staff recommendations, uh, was passed unanimously, so on behalf of committee, I move to accept.
We have a motion to force out a committee with no second required. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Passes unanimously, Ms. Ballard?
Mr. Campbell then submitted a request for permission to accept school redesign grant for schools identified as persistently struggling. Mr. Campbell introduced the school redesign grant first by the viewing of a PowerPoint which described the fundamentals of the brand. Upon completion of the PowerPoint, Mr. Campbell explained the benefits Calhoun Parish School Board would receive from approval of this grant. This redesigned grant will provide millions of dollars to implement our district's school improvement plan for persistently struggling schools. If unsuccessful, a state-approved plan will need to be implemented without financial assistance. A motion by Mr. Guidry, seconded by Mr. Hardy, to grant permission to accept the school redesign grant passed unanimously. On behalf of committee, I move, um, to pass.
All right, we have a motion from committee, no second, required, any discussion, question? Yes, ma'am, Ms. Guidry?
I have a question and it's just for clarification for myself. Uh, I remember at the committee meeting I asked, and it's in the report, that in the, that, uh, Calhoun Parish would have to implement this plan anyway regardless of whether or not we received the grant that we've applied for. And I think you said yes, is that true?
We would not necessarily have to implement, uh, the components, the tab or the position, but we would have to implement the strategies. In other words, we, we would have to demonstrate we should be making improvement, correct?
Okay, so in the event that we don't, and I think I said at the committee meeting, I pray that we do, uh, we're going to have to move forward with this anyway. We'll, so we won't have to move forward with the fidelity of having the grant and the security and the backing of the grant. It might be a scaled-down version, but it won't be the version that you're actually planning to implement right now.
I think we would take the strategies and the components, uh, that we thought would work the best out of what we submitted in granting, we would come to you and probably ask you to fund some of those locally.
Okay.
Absolutely.
So in, in some, uh, aspect of this, we're looking at ten million dollars for this grant, for this redesigned program. But it could be considerably less if we don't receive the grant.
Except that the results at the end of three years have to be the same.
Okay.
Mr. Hardy?
When Mr. Campbell introduced this idea of this grant, I don't think you stated that it's a state-required grant, is that right?
It's a state-required process. And that's because we have to implement strategies and demonstrate to the state that we're going to implement strategies in the persistently struggling schools.
All right, but I, but I've read this, Calhoun Parish, because it had ten struggling schools, student D or F or what have you, that you are required to implement this, uh, this process.
We, we are allowed to come up with the strategies that we want to use, but we have to implement the process, correct?
Yeah, you have to implement.
Yes, sir.
Now, I'm worried about preparation for the grant. I had to father grant, Mrs. Good, but I'm, I'm concerned about the preparation. I've read through a lot of the grants and I don't, I'm not sure whether it was explained entirely about what you're going to do after you made your presentation to the state. What will you bring forth, the details of that grant, of your planning?
Well, I, I think the details were in what you saw. If we're successful with the grant, we rewarded the grant, you would start seeing implementation after the first of January.
All right.
Yes, sir.
The, the next question has to do with, there's a three-year deal on this grant. What happens after three years?
Uh, the state has the opportunity, if, uh, if we still have F schools, um, to potentially take those schools over.
Well, and I, I've read, I mentioned that, did you tell the principals that if that school remained a D or F school, it's no longer in the possession of this school board?
An F, an F. And, and the principals are very well aware of this process. That, the principals were, were involved heavily in, in the formation of this grant.
Well, if you, if the principals are very aware of this, should our parents be aware of this also?
I, I think there will be an extensive process once we start, if we get the grant, of informing everybody.
So my question, or do you think the parents should be aware of this?
Aware that the state could come in and take over? Sure they should.
Yeah.
Sure they should.
Well, and, and I talked to some of the people in the state, uh, and some of the principals, they were not aware of all the details that's encompassed on that. Because if, having looked at that and having talked to these people in the state, they said, you have to pursue, they're not going to make that. They're not going to make that cutoff decision and consequently will be taken over by the state.
Now, it's only Fs, Mr. Hardy, at the end of the three-year process. It's only the Fs, if they remain an F, that have that potential. And the state doesn't say they're going to automatically take them over. They have the right to examine whether they want to take them over.
The state did say they have a chance to apply for another grant and that situation keep moving on.
Correct.
But I, I really would think you need to inform parents and the school community of where this grant and that process might lead. Because a lot of people are sitting unaware of that. And I might say talking to a lot of the principals of these struggling schools, they indicated no awareness of where they're headed. Because what it does mean is this, if the state takes over those schools, then board members like me have no control over those schools. Superstitions like yourself have no control over those schools. Principals who are at that school will have to get themselves another job, so...
Not, not just principals?
The whole day.
Everybody.
That's right, everybody. And so what I'm saying is this, we...
In all, you know, in, in any of these schools.
Yeah. Now, the other thing came up is all the funds. Now, it takes a lot of money to run a high school. Uh, say Washington-Berlin, you're looking at between seven, eight million dollars, high schools. That, that's quite a bit of money, uh, to be taking our decision and will cause quite a bit of problems. So I think the preparation, I'm talking to principals that, well, we have not been asked to what to do, what we want. And for years, unfortunately, the central office has been the guiding. I think we're going to have to get more information from those principals so that they can do a good job of planning what they need. They need to be asked. And, uh, for that matter, so do board members. They need to be asked about what are you looking for. So I hope the preparations are not such a central office preparation because I think I've seen more than twenty-five years of failure on the part of central officers. Thank you.
If, uh, if I may do so, board, I take a presidential privilege, I guess, to be the best way to do this. Mr. Campbell, are you comfortable in standing up and giving us about a two-minute digest of why this thing is a benefit, why Calhoun Parish wants to receive approval for the grant? You did a spectacular job the other night, but it was in front of a committee and about fifteen people. We have a full house here tonight or just about. And I'd like for them to hear why you feel and we feel that it's beneficial.
Mr. Hardy, as far as the, uh, the, uh, participation in the, in the development of this grant, as far as the principals are involved, you said they didn't know. I can show you slides that were presented to them at meetings, documented sign-in sheets and things like that. If you need, uh, the proof that they were, this is not a central office, uh, idea. This was not central office, it was, of course, guided by us, uh, but it was not solely our, our idea. Each individual principal was met with on an individual level to, to identify the needs of their school, to do a needs assessment, to come up with a budget for their individual schools and to, and to come up with the strategies for this. So it was not, a lot of it is state-driven, a lot of it is required, uh, no matter, uh, what we, even though, we do not have to do within this grant. We do have to come up with a, a, a school improvement plan for these schools that will pass the muster of state. The state has to approve them. So even though we didn't do these things and still we cut back a, a lot further than we, we had in this grant, it doesn't mean the state will approve it. we had in this grant, it doesn't mean the state will approve it. They may keep, keep us coming back and keep denying us until we do get to the point to where we do have the, the, uh, types of strategies, the types of curriculum, the type of things that they want to have in these schools, before they're gonna allow it off, off the hook. Uh, they, they, they gave us, uh, very few, uh, acceptable, uh, suggestions for us to use in this grant. One of the, one of those suggestions was for the, just to allow the state to take them over. We're not in a position where we believe that that's in the best interest of our schools, our students, or the school board, to relinquish, uh, our control, uh, and our, our guidance over the, over these schools. The thing that we, the, the one strategy that they did give that we felt was beneficial, and, and Mr. Hardy, you actually supported it, was the zone strategy, and we've been looking at that for a good while, but we took a look, we took a look at the two schools that we have right now in school improvement, in the STIG grant, we have Washington Marion and Comrie Fondale. We looked at the same strategies that we put in place in there, which were a transformational leadership model, and, and then also the TAP, uh, model for instruction in those two schools. We've seen just so far in those two schools, the fact that we've been able to staff Comrie Fondale with a hundred percent certified teachers for the first time, and, and since I've been here, and from what I understand, for the first time in a long time before I've been here, we've had a much better, uh, uh, we've done a much better job of staffing the teachers at Washington Marion this, this year. We have been able to bring outside people in by attracting them with that, uh, stair-step of leadership, uh, opportunities that are provided by our, our teachers, the mentor teachers, the master teachers, and executive master teachers. We've been able to, it, it recruit people from the outside of our district, uh, talented people to come in and work at these schools, and they've created already, uh, a, a, a much better collaborative, uh, environment at those schools than they've ever had before. Both principals are on board, both principals are excited, the teachers are excited. I personally attended these meetings, and I can tell you that there is a lot of promise in, in the grant that we have, uh, and we're mirroring pretty much what we've done in those two schools, that has all, has already shown tremendous improvement in both of those schools, in, in both the ability for us to recruit teachers there, and we think with the, with the TAP, uh, implementation of that model, that that's going to help us retain those teachers and keep them there. And that's the whole trick of getting these schools to improve, is to attract and retain and build, uh, and support the teachers at these schools. We think we've got a plan to do that, and now we're lumping together in what is called a zone strategy, that's allowed us to, to move. There are nine schools, Mr. Hardy, not ten schools, that were identified by the state. We have included Ralph Wilson in there, because there are fewer schools, Washington Marion, we felt that it was just reasonable that they be included in there, since they are currently, uh, rated a, a persistently struggling school. But since the, the criteria went back three years, they were left out of it, so we do have ten schools in here. We think the opportunity to bring these, these consistent strategies that we know have worked in lower-performing schools, and to, uh, and to implement them with fidelity across the en, the entire gamut of those ten schools, and put one person in charge that thinks every day solely nothing else, but what can I do to help these struggling schools? We think that that is, that, along with the, uh, transformational model for each of the administrators, and for the TAP model for instruction, we think that is a recipe for success for these schools. I'd be glad to answer anything else, Mr. President, you need.
Any other questions? Ms. Gay?
I just have, uh, one question, Mr. Campbell, um, and I spoke with you earlier in the day, today, and you said that you were actually seeing some progress with, uh, those two principals. But let me ask, uh, just exactly, what was the rationale to go from the elementary school to the high school, as opposed to implementing those TAP models in the elementary school and the middle school that's going to feed into, uh, the high school?
Ms. Gay, we didn't have a choice on which schools that we were identified, the state identified those nine schools based on the criteria you had, and I'm not answering your question?
No, I'm talking about, uh, I think you said Comrie Fondale and Washington Marion High Schools have already implemented...
Yeah, those are different grants, Ms. Gay, that, that is what they call school improvement grant, the STIG grants, and the state was very narrow in their definition of the schools that could qualify. The only reason Washington Marion qualified is because the graduation rate was below a certain, certain level, and I forget exactly why Comrie Fondale, uh, was, was, was funded and, and, and no one else was identified. Ms. Good, maybe you could help me out?
The number of years that the principal was there, because we had to...
That's right. One of the, one of the requirements was the transformational model, and, uh, and according to that model, that the principal could not have been at that school more than two years.
The middle school was not eligible, Ms. Gay.
Uh, yeah, I was trying to figure out why it wasn't eligible, because they started something in elementary school that would have gotten them to a different level in high school, because those elementary students would have been able to continue that process in middle school, and then everyone at one point would actually be on the same page.
We, we hope to include them in this grant and, and make up...
That's what this redesign grant allows us to do, Ms. Gay, is to bring in all the...
Okay, because I, I mean, you're missing a whole segment of students by the time they get to the high school, you know, six, uh, six, seven, eighth graders, they missed out on this model, so they're gonna have to be introduced to this new model when they get to high school. Okay.
Any other questions? Mr. Hardy?
One of my big concerns, I have, I have, I, I'm just amazed at what's happening. I don't think any student in the parish would be like Molo, uh, with more un-certified teachers than you got certified teachers. Now, here's why I'm saying that, Mr. Campbell, we said we're gonna have this grant in place by January. When are you gonna reach that forward?
Mr. Hardy, the grant, the grant will be funded in January, it will not be in place for the beginning of next school year, so we don't have a, a full half-year to put all these people in place and do all the planning and do all the training in, in the TAP model.
And because the grant does request that we have complete certified teachers, the other thing happened to be, talking to, we have a combination through the reconfigured schools, and talk to those people, I can understand why you might staff Comrie completely, and it has got to be successful in order for Clifton to be successful. How you, how you gonna resolve that problem? Now, here's what, here's what we're saying, perhaps we have, might have to reach the biggest of those schools back to K through five, and people are complaining that, "Hey, I got to depend on one school for my survival." And this school, Comrie, which is an F school, the prospects are really not great. And then you have two schools tied into the success of Comrie. How you, how you gonna resolve that problem?
I, I have to disagree, uh, with, with what you just said, Mr. Hardy, about, you're saying that the prospect for Comrie not great. I, I, I have extreme, uh, hope, not hope, I, I, I have confidence, that Comrie had eight points of growth last year, one of the highest-growing schools in our district, and, and you're, you're saying that, that, that you don't have any hope, that they're gonna get, even, even have even more progress this year, but the things are improving? I just totally disagree with that.
Well, you may disagree with the hope, but my, my comment is this, we see Clifton having depended entirely on the success of Comrie over those three years for it to be either closed or not. How you gonna resolve that issue?
Yeah, well, I understand that Comrie is dependent totally on Clifton, sending them second graders to third graders that can read, write, do arithmetic, also, Mr. Hardy, so they, they, it goes both ways.
Suppose Comrie does not succeed after three years, you now have two failing schools.
Yeah, but it, but it...
You have, you, you have a possible two, of those, those two schools being taken over, over by the state.
Yeah, but you, but you're hung up on, you're hung up on the F, that the state has not told us that all F schools are gonna be taken over by the state, they're just gonna be looking at the progress that those schools have made during the three years.
Um, thank you, Mr. Campbell.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Delphalos, what are some of the incentives that we have in place with this grant? And as an example, we're not to be able to track these certified teachers you're talking about. Are we talking about money, or what, what are we talking about?
There are some monetary incentives, Mr. Delphalos, uh, of course, we tried monetary incentives before, or after schools, and it hasn't really worked. I do the rhythm incentive, uh, for a teacher to go to a school, work at a school, stay at a school, is the fact that there's a good, strong leadership, and the fact that there's support, well, that, that is the rhythm incentive. But there are monetary incentives that go along with TAP, up to about eighteen hundred dollars depending on, uh, school performance score, depending on evaluations, and there's, there's three, uh, criterias there. But to attract the people to come in, uh, the, the quality leadership, you have about five thou, you have, not about, you have a five thousand dollar stipend for, uh, mentor teachers that are gonna work within the school. Those mentor teachers are staffed at a one-to-A ratio, I believe, uh, and, and so they're, they're getting paid five thousand dollars extra, uh, a year to work, uh, and, and that is kind of a leadership step into a leadership position, because they're actually going to be actually observing teachers and providing teachers feedback. And you have the master teacher position, which there'll be twenty-two of those positions, where they're paid seventy-five hundred dollars a year, uh, in, in addition to their, their salary. And so that's another step towards a leadership position there, and those are, those are incentives. In fact, when we look back at, at the, the schools that were in TAP before, and we look back at the, the mentor teachers and the, and the master teachers that were in their schools, almost all of them are our, are our, uh, principals, our assistant principals right now at those schools. So that's one of the reasons why they're willing to move. But I'm telling you, we brought in just regular teachers, we brought in teachers who, who just applied for these mentor positions, didn't get them, but when they found out about the TAP, they wanted to work with these schools. We had, uh, teachers come from out, out of parish, we had teachers come from private school, we had teachers come from charter school to work in these schools after they sold their student.
My concern is, is, you know, we, we've been down this road with the TAP model before, so, uh, I just wanna make sure that the incentive is there, and that we're making sure that we're, we're not making the same mistakes we did on the last one.
We did, we did look back at, at that, and at Delphalos, uh, I think there were twenty-two, twenty-three schools that went into the TAP at that time. It was, it was too much for, there was, there was not enough, uh, human capital out there for us to draw from, to get the quality of people in the schools. That's why we feel we've learned a lesson, that's why we're doing a lesson half of that. But we also went back and we looked at the, the growth of schools that were in TAP, the ones that are in our, within our grant right now, that were in TAP, all of them, with the exception of one school, showed consistent growth over those TAP years. So we, we think that there was only, only one failure in that one school, not exactly sure I wasn't around when that happened, not exactly sure what, when that failure took place, but in the huge majority of the schools, we saw consistent growth in the TAP model.
Thank you, I think it's an awesome opportunity, uh, for our school system, uh, for teachers that wanna come and be part of a change, and that's gonna help our schools grow, so I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion on the floor from committee. Go ahead, you have a talk?
Um, kind of, you know, talking about failing schools, talking about CD and F schools, talking about, you brought up, Mr. Hardy, that, um, central office that has kind of failed. To kind of put this in context, when I got on the board years ago, they were rolling out No Child Left Behind, and they had a line in the sand. And every year, that line in the sand moved up the scale, and went from thirty percent, and I'm just, the number is thirty percent, forty percent the next year, then that school had to go from forty percent, fifty, forty-three percent, and a year after that, they had, they always had improvement. Then you had schools that might have been at ninety-five, that had to get to the point that they were having to score a hundred and ten or a hundred and eighteen to be able to keep their, their A, B, or C grades. So to say that administration has kind of failed, I disagree with that. The, the, the line in the sand has kept moving. I see a lot of teachers out here, I see a lot of administrators, um, principals, and I see a lot of parents in the back. I want to commend y'all for coming in and listening to this. If we had more parents that had got involved in the schools, I don't think we would be here. You know, these schools wouldn't be in here. We have students that have wanted to go elsewhere to, to, to make the schools better, and that's not happening. Um, but the line in the sand has kept moving. The students, so when we started this journey, when I started years ago, to where they are now, there has been consistent improvement every single year in these schools. What has changed, again, is the line in the sand. Schools that may have been scoring twenty-five, thirty percent back then are now scoring significantly better, they have improved every single year. Um, the amount of money that this board invests in these schools is, is truly mind-blowing. Um, the dollars spent at some of these schools compared to some of the others, is anywhere from fifty to sixty percent more invested in your students. What we need is to have them and the parents involved, there's four legs in a successful school. You got the students, you got the parents, you got the community, the administration. If any one of those are not participating in it, we're gonna have issues. Y'all are not the problem. I commend you again for being here. It's the parents that wanna blame everybody else, you know, for whatever the issues are. Ever since I've been on the board, we've been willing to invest in these schools and do what we need to do to get there. A lot of the interference that we've had since I've been on the board have been board members in the past, when it came time to, that it was clear to everybody that had changed, needed to be made in the administration, with the, it would, well, you can't do that because that's my friend, or, you know, that, that's not gonna make me look good, or whatever the case. Sometimes you gotta have board choices that really need to be made. Now we're at the point to where we're gonna try to pass the bonds in, in this parish to deal with some of the issues in these schools, whether it be the, the physical facilities of the school, whether, you know, putting roofs and, and, and investing inside the classrooms with technology and everything else, and now we've got board members that they don't wanna do that, in those, in those schools that we're talking about. Getting on TV and saying, "I'm not gonna support a bond to make my schools who are having issues, we're just gonna, we're just gonna keep them down, we're not gonna invest any money in that." I would be appalled if I was y'all. That makes no sense whatsoever. We've invested a hundred and fifty million dollars in bonds on the west side of the parishes I've been on here, and in our town, they're scoring well. We invested the money inside the classrooms, we're investing money inside your classrooms. And what we need is just is, is to have all four legs participate, and if the fifth leg is being the board members. I commend you again for being here. You need to get your people involved in these, in, in your areas, and I see the leg shaking her head, to get them in these schools. The things that are going on in these schools, what the teachers are teaching them, it's great, it's phenomenal. We are not, in, in investing in these schools with the money that's coming in to give them additional activities, to bring all the students back to the schools that are out of zone because somewhere else. If they would actually look at what the schools are, no, but the perception of these schools are failing. They're not failing, they have progressively gotten better every single year, and investment in the schools is gonna continue to make it better. I highly suggest that you give it to people and you support these bonds. I'm telling you, since we've been on here, the amount of money that we've spent has been in the benefit and the betterment of your children's, your child's education. Thank you very much for being here, thank you, thank you, thank you.
He took a shot in the last time.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Hayes?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Bro, uh, identified me as probably incorrectly, I think he was talking about Ms. Gay who opposed the ball. I am talking between a rock and a hard place. I support the ball, but...
I'm just gonna remind the board, we're talking about whether or not we wanna accept the grant permission to, uh, to the school redesign. I appreciate all your comments, I really do, but let's get back to the business of the board. All right, Mr. Hardy, I'm gonna, I'm gonna watch it, go ahead, go ahead, start, do what you got to say.
I pointed out repeatedly, over and over again, that I might knew it, Mr. Gay, this is not my first rodeo. Now, unlike Mr. Bro, I've been in those classrooms. As a matter of fact, I was so disgusted with what I, what I saw, that I looked around some six years ago. I felt we were not doing what we should do. Mr. Pete's right there, since we were not performing, I had no problem staying, taking over these schools, because I had not seen progress in seventeen years. I know that Mr. Savoy sent out people to look at what I was saying, we had visitors, but if the schools are not performing, and I'm looking at this, and you telling you have had a lot of progress, well, for the last twenty-some years, and by the way, I was there at those meetings for accountability that we had the last year. You can say they are proven, but when those kids can't pass an ACT test, something's wrong. The bar is moving not only for other schools, it's moving for the schools that are struggling. So something is wrong if somebody is making that bar and others are not making that bar. So whom do we look at? Yes, we look at all those legs you were talking about, Mr. Bro, the superintendent and his administration, the school, et cetera, we look at all those legs. But I've reached a point where I see our children in Washington, La Grange, not being able to make the necessary ACT scores to go on to college. Now, we do send a lot of children from these schools to the well, but yes, I'm for the bond issue, I'm for this grant, but I'm also looking at the level of preparation we've had over the years, which has not been... But I'm also looking at the level of preparation we've had over the years, which has not been sufficient. It has not moved those children to the testing level where they can pass ACT tests and go on to college. I'm definitely for the bond issue. If you're from my district, you know Fred Hardy for the bond issue. I'm for this grant here. But I do, I do want your preparation to be much better than it has been in the past. That's why I've mentioned things like Molo understaffed, completely understaffed. If this school had been anywhere else, it probably would be closed down because it's unbelievable. Let me put it across town and see what happens to it. It would be staffed immediately. So... This is the kind of thing. And what happens with a board member like me, you put in a position where I suspect we don't get all the funding that we really need. So there are a lot of things that I have to... Yeah, you shaking your head, Mr. Brookhouse, but when you look at District Thirty-four and you see what you've done, it's incredible. Thank you, Mr. Hardy. Kevin.
Mr. Delafosse.
I think we've probably talked about some very important things. And we probably need to get back to the issue that we have regarding the item that's on the agenda. So I'm gonna call for questions.
I'd question to be called. All in favor, seeking to debate, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
Nay.
All right, it's passed. We now go to the original motion, which was to accept school redesign or grant permission to accept school redesign grant. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes.
It passes. Ms. Ballard?
Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you so much, Ms. Ballard. We will now move to item nine, take appropriate action. A, approval of resolution for issuance, sale, and delivery of three million eight-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars general refunding bond of school district number thirty-four.
Second.
Mr. Duan, did you make the motion? You made the second. Mr. Roberts made the motion. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Passes unanimously. Move on B, approval of County Parish School Board Head Start Policy Council bylaws. And we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Passes unanimously. C, approval of cooperative endeavor agreement between County Parish School Board and Louisiana Community and Technical College Systems, Sowella. Need a motion? All right, we have so moved. A second? And a second. Any questions or discussion? Yes, do we have questions? Yes, sir, Mr. Hardy.
Tell me about finance again.
Item thirty, Mr. Brookhouse, please.
Yes, sir. Sowella has eleven temporary classrooms that they are no longer in need of. Through cooperative agreement, they will transfer those to us at no cost. All we have to do is go get them, and we will transfer them out to Chinal for where we need them throughout the parish. We're gonna put them out at Chinal at maintenance for the time being until we identify places that need them for the future.
Those will not go to the school that they classroom or what?
Not directly right now. They'll just go to Chinal until we... Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Now we go to nine D, which was our supplemental agenda item, moved by Mr. Delafosse, and the second by Mr. Brode. Approval of resolution to hire special counsel for sales tax litigation. Any questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. Ten A, we're going to go to bid number two oh one eight dash oh four P.C. Gillis Elementary Drainage Improvement Sales Tax District number three. We have a blue card. Let's go with the motion first.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Duan, a second? By Mr. Natale? All right, Johnson, do you wish to speak?
This is new business for Gillis Elementary that the community's been begging for for a long time. But you look at the bids that came in, we had a huge difference in the amount of bids. The low one that you're recommending is two-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand dollars. The next one is three-hundred-and-forty-four. And then we go to four-ninety-five and four-ninety-seven. With the history of change orders in this parish, it seems like that's just begging for a huge change order. I wonder if the bidder had been to the site at Gillis Elementary to do surveys, if they've gone to see where the underground lines were, where the plumbing lines were. All those things that caused those change orders that cost us a lot of money that could be pooled into other things that are more beneficial than a change order that's probably gonna grow like the others have.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. I would assume, just off the top of my head, that the normal procedures were followed in deriving these bids. Right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Duan?
Yes, the architect has been out there with that contractor, and they've looked at the site extensively. And to be just upfront with you, probably are gonna have some change orders on that that are beat our benefit because we're doing some other things out there that will make it easier for the drainage. So we've probably come out with less money than we think we are in the long run. Again, they have looked at it quite a bit.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor of approved, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Passes unanimously. Permission to advertise, we do not have any of that. Correspondence, twelve A, change. All right, we have a motion by Mr. Delafosse to accept it. Change order number five for the project classroom pod, phase ten. Project seventeen fifteen, shampoo, Evan Toktar, designer, Miller and Associates, contractor increase of one-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand one-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars and fifty-two cents, an increase of twenty-five days. Questions or discussion?
Yes, Mr. Dar. I'm gonna make one comment. I meant to say this when we talked in the budget committee meeting, but that's a lot of pod projects, and I appreciate the, like, summary of what the status of all those projects was. That was, that's good. It's a lot to keep track of. They're all over the place. So it's kind of not exactly related, but I appreciate that summary. You okay, Mr. Hardy?
Okay, I also have a blue card on this item as well from Ms. Johnson. Ms. Johnson, do you wanna come up and talk about the change order?
Going back to my previous point, if you look at all the change orders that are in the section twelve, it's like forty-seven thousand dollars just in one because they had to replace four soil conditions encountered during site work operations. That's what caused Preon Lake Elementary's diversion road to fill up so much. It seems like these soil samples would have been taken prior to the bids being left. There wouldn't be this amount of change orders. And this is just this meeting that's one-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand dollars. I think since this project was left, it's almost half a million in change orders, just on this phase ten. I just think there needs to be a committee or somebody or a contractor that's brought in to explain why you didn't see this before. I mean, all this money could be going towards our kids rather than dirt and things that should have been seen in the beginning.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Mr. Dar.
Yeah, let me, Ms. Johnson, we agree with you. But we've kind of hammered on that many times, and we have definitely given the sort of direction to the staff that we wanted to take a look at how we do these change orders and why they always come up. So I think they get the point, is what I'm just, is what I'm saying. And we're working on that and how we sort of handle those things. But on this one, you gotta remember, it's a fourteen million dollar project. And every time we've had a change order on this project, we've looked at it and we've said, "You know what? This is not..." The Preon Lake Road was a little different. It's a fourteen million dollar project. I have no problem with small change orders. On a project that's big, that's why I said, it's pot all over the whole parish. I'm not saying it's okay, but I'm kind of saying we know this kind of thing does happen to some extent. But we get what you're saying, definitely.
Okay, Mr. Delafosse.
I'm just gonna say...
You're next. You're next. Delafosse first, and then we're gonna get to you. Okay, go ahead.
I'm just gonna say, when we do the soil samples, basically it's gonna tell us we have to take off this much more dirt, right? So what does it cost to bore a hole? And we gotta do holes all over these properties. That's expensive as well. So, and it says, "You're gonna have to haul this dirt off." So they're gonna give you that bid in the beginning, so you necessarily don't have the change order, but you're still gonna pay the same cost. Is that pretty much correct?
I think you've summarized that very accurately.
Okay. The other thing I wanna say is, you know, these architects here have actually inherited this project, my understanding as well. So they're doing the best they can because the bid had already gone out, is my understanding. Whenever they got the project, the architect retired, they got the bid, they got the, basically, the job to do this. So, I mean, we're gonna pay for this one way or the other. Either you're gonna bore for dirt, work the sample, then you're gonna pay more upfront, haul it off, or you're gonna have a change order to do the same difference. So if we're doing a change order to haul off the dirt, and we kept from having to do the boring, then we saved the money.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Delafosse.
I'm just gonna mention, when you look at the amount of change orders that we had on this one, we're still at less than ten percent. A typical project, even when you go to a house, you gotta account for at least a ten percent factor of what they're gonna find and what they're gonna add on to a job. So while it seems a lot, a fourteen million dollar project, like Mr. Darper said, we're still at less than ten percent. And I'm gonna assume we're gonna have more change orders simply because we're not even... Somebody's gonna have even start going up here. So there're gonna be some more change orders. Now, I do agree, Mr. Dar, we've talked about this quite a bit, and we do... I think we talked about getting a group. Is that right, Mr. Brookhouse? I wasn't here for the last meal. I was in Houston. Did that come up about us?
And not come favorably out of committee.
It did not. Okay. So, you know, when we talked about finding ways to remedy some of the issues we're talking about, we had an opportunity to do that. So we can't continue just talk about it and not pass things that's gonna help us to address some of these problems. So at some point, we're gonna have to look at it again and get an architect because we know Mr. Heath has a lot of stuff he's doing as our director, but there's a lot of stuff that I don't think he's qualified to do in terms of architect-type stuff. So having someone come in and design the plans that's going out before they get on it, I think is very important that we have. So I think this is gonna have to come up again shortly. We just hold it, one area, holded this down probably about a month or two ago. So I'm hoping that we look at it again. Thank you.
All right, sir. Anybody else comment? Mr. Dar.
My concern is the change orders. Get off your mic. This is the fifteen million that we borrowed, which is paying for these pots. Now, as we make these change orders, this was an increase of one-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand one-ninety-one fifty-two. And we've designated Riverboat money for that. How is that going to affect the distribution of Riverboat funds in the future? If we, this thing might wind up being, instead of fourteen, might wind up being fifteen plus interest. What happens then?
Well, your original bid was in the, let's see, if you look at the change order, you see the original project cost, which was thirteen four-ninety-five. So you had some cushion in there.
You got the cushion within the thirteen.
You've been, the original bid for the project was thirteen million four-ninety-five, even though you sold fifteen million dollars of bonds.
And we had, right now, we added one-twenty-nine to that.
So we're at fourteen oh sixty-eight right now.
I think you see where I'm going.
Sure.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Since you're ready to vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? We're now to the condolences and recognition portion of our agenda. Mr. Hardy, Steve, we'll start with you. You can have any. And just work your way on down. Ms. Ballard. Mr. Williams? Mr. Smith?
Yes, I have a condolence letter to Ms. Linda Royer, which is a secretary at the Hudson Middle School of her husband, about a month.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Ballard.
Yes, the very tragic death of the young ten-year-old at Preon Lake Elementary. Condolence letter to the family of Jalen's citizens.
Thank you. Mr. Dar. Mr. Delafosse. Ms. Gay, we'll go all the way down to you. Come back.
Okay, I'd like to just have a letter sent to Mrs. Frankie Lane. She worked in County Parish Schools for a long time. She's an amazing woman. She served as a guidance counselor. I think she got her start at Benton. She worked in Benton for a long time, and I'd like something sent to her son. She leaves behind two sons.
Rock? And then, Mr. Hardy?
I'd like to recognize Mrs. Lane also. She worked as a counselor. I have the new lawyer here. In addition, this week was... Well, I have one more deceased person. Unfortunately, I didn't bring in the name of the person. Mrs. Peggy Hughes. I don't know what you would call Mrs. Hughes. But her grandson died, and I just didn't have the information, so I get Mrs. Carl to take this. But one of the things I'm very happy with, we celebrated a homecoming in Washington. And that Indian that you see out front, I'm getting a little scary about calling mascot Indians. That's not good these days. But Mrs. Charlene Kell, a local artist, repaired that Indian that had a broken arm and placed it in front of Washington Mary. Now, why do I like that so much? It was my class of nineteen fifty-nine. We donated that Indian to Washington High School. So I want to, I want to send a letter again of appreciation to Mrs. Charlene Kell for restoring our Indian. Thank you so much.
Mr. Brode? Mr. Duan?
Just want to comment, Ms. Lane was the counselor of the middle school while they were back in the county.
All right, scheduling committees, November twenty-eighth. Insurance committee at five P.M., A and P committee to follow. And before we adjourn, I wanna remind the board members that the superintendent's evaluation is due Friday, October twenty-seventh. You can mail it or drop it off at the Broad Street office right here. We have a motion. Which turn?
Real quickly, in reference to that, you also should have an email where you can fill out the superintendent's evaluation electronically and email it. So check your email. That'll be, I think it'll be a lot easier than having to write it all, so.
Okay, we'll entertain a motion. It's adjourned.
So moved.
Moved, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Nobody opposed to that. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for attending.